Call the meeting to order. We'll have a roll call. Keith Olgood.
Friend.
Tony Campbell.
Here.
Tom Cullen.
Here.
Leanne Ferguson.
Here.
Chuck Slater. Absent. Donna Boggs. Absent. Gary Corlou.
Here.
Tony Gross.
Here.
And me, I'm here. Non-voting staff, we have Martha Brooke Perry, Jay Easter, and Lori, are you in for Debbie Finch? She's just on here.
No, I'm on speaker.
Okay, alright. So, we have a quorum. Alright, you have the minutes here, actually it's the minutes for a meeting that was recessed, you can call the order again later, so you'll see two things in one here. You get a two for one.
I'm overly approved, Ms. Circuit Lady.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So, if you look at the agenda, I want to bring your attention to something for today's agenda. Item E, the Wiley subdivision, we are not going to discuss today, that's deferred. Correct, okay. F is still good, and under G, other, Sharon is here to brief us on a floodplain issue.
How many, do we know how many kinds of Wiley subdivision there are?
There's no limit.
No limit.
So, any discussion on the agenda?
Overly approved the agenda.
Have a second?
Concluded item G.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's approved. Alright, so, the first item we'll discuss tonight is David and Nancy Sturd event, minor subdivision Harpeth Meadows Drive. Who's here to talk about that?
Brian.
I guess I am. I guess we have up here.
No.
No, we should try. You've got any facts? Ah, okay. Essentially, all this is a consolidation plan, original lots one and two, they wanted to combine those into one single lot, and it's over yet.
Not in the floodplain?
No. No.
Well, it's not far.
It's not far.
It's not far from us, right?
No issues found, I mean, we've got a transmission pole out front, but it's well beyond the behind the setback for houses and yards, so you... There is one kink in the plan. We've got everybody's signature except for Beals. He's on vacation. I'd like to ask for contingent signature upon his signature.
We reviewed... Go ahead. No, I'm sorry. We reviewed the plan, there were no... We had three comments that Brian addressed, and they're addressed on my orders that are here. The only thing missing is the one signature he's waiting on someone to get back on vacation.
So, do we ever recommend approval if it's missing a signature?
You could recommend approval contingent on it not being recorded until you get the final signature.
Contingent upon it not being finally signed by the planning secretary and truly noted.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it contingent upon the final signature.
Second, right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Any other discussion? Maybe you don't see anything else, Jay and Martha Brooke Perry. Okay? Alright, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, is this passed as the motion was stated? Thank you for the recommendation to the city council.
Who made the second? Time.
Okay, so, now we have, I believe, the last item is Sharon's going to brief us on floodplain.
Good evening. It's good to see you all again. This is going to be a hope mercifully brief. You received a letter from FEMA on July the 10th of this year, reminding you that you would receive maps the year before to review for changes to your floodplain areas. After a little investigation, somewhat determined the maps weren't really reviewed, but because no one protested appeal or commented, they now will become final. The only way to appeal any item on the map now or any changes to the map is to file an engineering study, which, as those of you who have done floodplain management work in the past know, is prohibitively expensive. So, there is a process that you have to accomplish between now and December the 22nd, 2016, in order to adopt the map changes, and also to internalize a couple of presidential executive orders that were signed into law, along with the Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act. And for those of you who didn't attend the training session, which had been about a year, year and a half, under the Flood Insurance Affordability Act that we had at the community center, that act is now final, the rules are in place through FEMA, it is now fini complet. So, there are some tenets within the executive orders that don't have any impact on residential or commercial destruction or infrastructure, because you don't allow any of that in a city. But they do have impact on infrastructure projects. So, when you do streets, when you do bridges, when you do water, sewer, community buildings, anything that has a federal dollar invested in it, the requirements have been stiffened from a one-foot elevation, which your current ordinance requires for infrastructure, to a two-foot elevation. There's also some wetland legislation that'll need to be internalized within the flood ordinance as well. I got a call from Debbie, she's asked me to bring this to you tonight. The planning commission is a recommending body, you all are, for the zoning book. Your flood ordinance is housed within your zoning ordinance. So, you will hear this tonight and recommend adopting or not adopting the changes to the flood insurance map, and recommending it forward to the city council. The result, or the consequence, of not adopting the map changes is that you will be suspended from the flood insurance program as a community. So, they kind of don't give you a choice. So, we're going to walk through this pretty quick. Your current floodplain administrator is your city manager?
Let me...
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure everybody understands that she's our floodplain expert, and has worked with the city for quite a few years, bringing our floodplain ordinance up to date and keeping it up to date.
I also would... And I apologize, I'm Sharon Armstrong, I'm your former planner. I do a lot of consulting work in floodplain management, and I trained side by side with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers and TEMA through the statewide association. So, having said that, Flood Insurance Act was created in 1968, and it was in response to a great deal of flooding on Mississippi River. Congress decided that people needed flood insurance. So, they're trying to, one, put some regulations in place to sort of encourage people not to build in flood areas, and, two, devise an insurance program, which didn't exist up until this day, to insure flood properties, and, third, to place the risk and cost on the person who lives in the flood area rather than on the taxpayers. Didn't work out too well. When the legislation finally was drafted, they created subsidized premiums. So, when you go buy your homeowner's policy for your house, one, it doesn't cover floods, it's just not a coverage that you can buy commercially. So, hence the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, and you'll hear that synonymously used with FEMA. So, the rates were artificially low, you could buy flood policy for, back in the day, for $69, regardless of how far below base flood elevation your structure might be. That fee has now risen to a whopping $339 a year to ensure your structure against flooding if you have subsidized policies. You join the program, you agree to adopt an ordinance, you agree to administer it, and you agree to enforce it. Your ordinance contains all of that language. Also, there's no adverse impact. You are not a no adverse impact community, but I would say to you that you are a prime community to join the special program that FEMA has, because you don't allow construction in flood areas. So, you would get some discount on your flood policies through almost, it's almost like an ISO rating for the fire department. So, I would strongly encourage your community to pursue that, given the changes to the maps, and they're going to have some impact on property owners. But you have not adopted what sounds a no adverse impact within your ordinance, but you could, because you prohibit development in flood areas. So, if you adopted this within there, you would get CRS, community, the CRS program gives you discounts on flood insurance, so that would be something that I would advocate that you pursue. Hurricane Agnes in '72 brought some more changes, $3 to $4 billion in damage, and that was kind of the whole system of Hurricane Agnes. To give you some context, the flood that took place in our area in 2010, through a 45-county area, the damage was $4.2 billion. Of that $4.2 billion, $2.1 billion was flood insured, the remaining $2.1 billion was passed along to the taxpayer for recovery.
Question. A lot of insurance policies don't cover hurricane damage. Would this cover, this policy cover flood damage in hurricane areas?
Absolutely, and has. In Katrina, for example, what happened to the city of New Orleans, I'm sure you all remember the news coverage, what happened within the city of New Orleans is they constructed a series of levees, which they said would protect the city. Obviously, they failed, right? So, a lot of people dropped their policies because they were living behind a levee system. But the flood insurance policies do cover hurricanes, typhoons, any sort of flooding from these sources. Does that answer your question? Those are not...
A lot of times, you can't get insurance, if you think you had homeowner's insurance, it wouldn't cover the damage due to a hurricane.
Your homeowner's policy, right, covers no flooding, just so you know, and that's not just if you live in a flood area, your homeowner's...
What he's saying is that this will cover flood damage, but not wind damage and hurricane.
Okay, who's the smartest going to tell the difference in all this stuff?
There is a distinction between the two. For a hurricane, even if it's wind-driven, if there's just wind damage, this policy, FEMA will argue with you about covering that. But if there's wind and water damage, they'll pay it. There may be some screaming and yelling, much as there was up in the Northeast a few years back, but they'll pay it. They're like any other insurance company. Okay. So, they had another goal during the Reagan-Bush administration to make the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, self-supporting. Haven't gotten there yet. Says the goal was reached in 1985. Trust me, it wasn't reached. FEMA was $5 billion in the hole after the Middle Tennessee flood. So, the Mississippi River flooding, they improved compliance with mandatory optivity, you could buy flood insurance if you wanted to, but they added a colloquial to the regulations that said, if you have a federally backed mortgage, you're going to buy flood insurance here in flood areas, period. Tennessee kind of built on that idea after the flood here in 2010, and said, if you have a flood area in your community, you will join the National Flood Insurance Program. We had, at the year end, first year of passage of that bill in 2012, 39 communities that just said, we're not doing it, you can't make this. We're now down the burry. So, you're required, under state statutory requirements, if you have flood property mapped in your jurisdiction, to join the National Flood Insurance Program. So, here's what you agree to do. Adopt and enforce an ordinance, appoint a floodplain administrator, who at this point is your city manager, that's what your ordinance says, utilize a floodplain development process, there has to be a permit issued for development within flood areas, regardless of whether it's a city project, a state project, even if the state's building a road, you still have to go through the process with it. Collect design certification to elevation, also commonly known as an elevations template, Brian's real familiar with those. Maintain records, these are permanent, never go away, never get boxed, never get rid of them records. Conduct field inspections to ensure compliance, maintain accurate maps, which is why we're having this discussion today, notify other communities of alterations and relocations of streams. Now, if you were to expand your transportation quarters within the city limits of Kings Springs and build a road, and a portion of the area you want to build a road in contains flood area, we're now wetland because of the executive order, you have to notify the surrounding jurisdictions that it's your intent to tamper with that area. So, that's what that means. What happens if you don't do it? Well, first, they kick you out of the flood insurance program, and all of your property owners, commercial and residential, and the city loses their flood policies. Second, they can't get an SBA loan, they can't get a VA loan, they can't get an FHA loan, I mean, it just goes on and on. You can't qualify for any of these things. Public assistance is removed in the event you have a disaster, they won't come and bring you the FEMA wagon with money in it. If your infrastructure is in special flood hazard area, you don't participate, they will not insure it, obviously, and they won't give you assistance to build it back, much like the road washed out of Kings Springs Road here. Individual assistance, they won't cover the contents of the buildings, they are not allowed to get any mitigation funds, hazard mitigation plans, which, by the way, your county is writing right now, you should take a look at that document, and they won't do acquisition, elevation, or retrofitting of any flood properties. So, that's the consequence to not adopting the new act.
What's the county...
Pardon?
What is the county doing?
What is the county doing about...
I don't know, there you said the county is doing it right now, you made a check off.
Oh, their hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan is being drafted, and it's up for public review, public comment through Edwin Hogan's office. Within your hazard mitigation plan is where you acquire funds to help people who live in flood areas to elevate, retrofit, all those sorts of things. The last time it came up before the county commission, and you guys did stellar job after the flood here, you helped people with their properties. Mr. Hogan suggested to the county that there were a number of properties that could benefit from this program, because they were literally underwater on their mortgage, their properties were flooded, and they had insufficient insurance. The county elected not to participate. So, that happens in a lot of jurisdictions, I'm not picking on the county, I mean, they do that because once you buy that property, right, if you buy it or acquire it, you can't put anything on it, it just sits there. So, they've changed the rules of hazard mitigation. Why is this important to you? Because you do have some buildings in flood areas that were constructed before the maps changed, or back in the day before you were a city. So, they changed the rules to say that you don't just have to buy them out, you can now help them to either tear it down and rebuild it properly, which they never allowed before. You just had to raise it, or figure out some other way to deal with it. You could not build it back once the structure was taken down. Now, they will make HMGP, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, funds available to deconstruct and rebuild. Because a lot of times, for those of you who have lived through this process at the county, people are reluctant to give up their home, you know, and once they tear it down, they're off the property, they could never build on it again. And if it's Grandma and Granddaddy's farm, or it's something they've worked for 30 years to pay for, they're reluctant to allow a government just to buy them out and throw them off the property. So, this is a mechanism that can keep their land and rebuild. So, those are important changes to the program.
So, Sharon, are you saying they can just rebuild in the floodplain, the house looks the same?
Not in your jurisdiction. You prohibit construction within your floodplain and your floodway.
So, who is it that, where is this?
Seymour Creek.
So, now you're saying the county allows that?
It's allowed in every other jurisdiction with the exception of yours. It's allowed in your external region, your growth zone, which you have to review, and it's a fairly significant area outside of your city that you review. We had one of those not too long ago with Mr. Northcutt.
So, in those jurisdictions where it's allowed, you can rebuild a structure that's subject to flooding again, is what you're saying?
Not only can you, they did.
Okay, alright.
I would hazard a guess that 90 to 95 percent of the properties that flooded in the 2010 flood were built back exactly where they were.
Oh.
With mostly your tax dollars. The other issue to the flood insurance program is if they have insufficient insurance to cover their losses, SBA comes to town, Small Business Administration, and the Small Business Administration finds out what the gap is between their flood insurance and what the cost to rebuild is, and they write them a loan at 0 percent interest.
For residents?
For residents, or business. If they maintain, in a residential situation, not a business situation, but in a residential situation, if they maintain ownership for five years, that loan becomes a grant, and it comes out of your back pocket, because the taxpayers pay for it. So, over the years, trying to help people who locate in flood areas, the bill has gotten so high that FEMA was in danger of literally going under. So, when they reauthorized FEMA in 2015 through this act, they said, no, we're going to start leveling the playing field. Okay? So, but in some cases, that can be cost prohibitive to a property owner, and we'll get into that more. But the title of the act, for those of you who'd like to do research, is the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act. Covers both residential and commercial. It's commonly known, the FEMA website is HFIAA, and it was implemented as of October of last year. So, property circumstances that may change coverage for people, and you do have people who are covered by fault policies, they were here when you became a town, so they did build, and they did build in flood areas, and it won't be impact on these people. Substantial damage, substantial improvement, who knows what that means? It's a pop quiz? Okay.
Percentage of your, of the damage to your...
For the building, Martha Brooke knows, she's lived through this stuff in the county, for building inspectors and professionals, when you invade the system of a building by more than 50 percent electrical, plumbing, HVAC, or structure, you have to bring up current code. Flood insurance, no different. Once it surpasses that 49 percent, Laura, you must bring it into compliance with the current floodplain management ordinance. There's a lot of screaming when you say that, but I mean, it's the same, it's common sense, you do that with a building code.
If I could interject here, too.
Sure.
Something a lot of people don't think about, your property assessments, that's done by the property assessor's office. A lot of people go in and contest those, saying, my property's not worth that much. Well, if you get it reduced, and allowance of flood, guess what property assessment they're going to use in evaluating that?
And it's the most commonly used valuation method, one, because it's statewide approved, and it's used nationally. It's considered to be an equal assessment basis, because everybody gets assessed under the same guidelines, so they run straight to the assessor's office, pull all the records, and see what the valuation is. So, if I owned a flood property, I would be standing in the tax assessor's office going, no, 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 my property is worth whatever market value is, because the lower it is, the harder it is for you to rebuild. So, okay, with substantial damage, substantial improvement, and it's damage from any source, I want you to let that sink in for a second. It doesn't matter if your property's damaged by a tornado, a flood, a fire, a former county commissioner has one too many and runs over it with his car, any source of damage that equates cumulatively over the life of that property, regardless of who owns it, and equates to more than 49 percent, this kicks in. Because a lot of people try to change ownership, like they give it away to one of their grandkids, they try a lot of stuff, but it's cumulative, regardless of who owns it. They're looking at the structure, not the owner. Select zoning, we don't look at the property owner, we look at the property, right? So, if your policy lapses, you will immediately go to actuarial rates, which in some cases is substantial. I've seen quotes as low as $339 for bird risk, I've seen quotes on a $300,000 house for $129,000 a year for flood insurance. I sit in the bone, trust me. But if you let your policy lapse, you immediately go to actuarial rate, immediately. So, if your structure is mapped in, that's what we're talking about, you've got new maps. The best I can figure out, 19 or so properties are going to be affected by the map itself. Multiple other structures will be affected by this act, because they're eliminating grandfather. So, if you have a federally backed mortgage, you must purchase flood insurance if you're in a flood area, period, there's no argument. You have to notify the floodplain administrator changes to the structure. So, if you're going to do anything to a property in a flood area, the building official's not the only person you have to see. Whoever, in many cases, they're the same person, they're two halves, right? But in some jurisdictions, it's not. As an example, here, your floodplain administrator is the city manager, and I love Debbie, she's a very bright lady, but I don't think she does building inspections. So, just going to the building inspector won't cover it. And that's for your grandfather properties as well, when they want to expand, remodel, rebuild, add to, put stuff in the backyard, put in a pool, you know, one of those shelter structures with a fireplace, all of that falls into the ordinance. All new construction, it says county, but insert name of jurisdiction here, that's the city ordinance. So, your new current maps are effective the 22nd of December 2016, whether you adopt them or not. They're live, they're effective. The community must adopt new maps and send adoption ordinance to FEMA before that effective map date, which means it has to go through this body, to the city commission, two readings of the ordinance to adopt it, and be shipped back to FEMA and read and approved before December the 22nd. Otherwise, they'll suspend you from the program. And when you don't adopt maps, it's not like other flood area infractions, they just kick out a program the next day. They have an automated system that generates a limit, says you're out until you adopt it. In the meantime, you're not covered, so, not a good thing. Steps to update the floodplain management ordinance. Update the ordinance to adopt the new flood maps, and these links are not live, we can't get my computer to talk to your internet, but I will share a link that I have with Lori and with Debbie. I built you a temporary website that houses all of this information, the training, the maps, all that sort of stuff, so you can go and look and see. They updated the Harpeth, obviously, Sam's Creek area, obviously, and Maribou. Why am I including all of this in your area? Believe it or not, some of the Maribou backwater feeds into the Harpeth. And Tony, I've had this discussion before, you argue with the court, I'm just saying, that's the court's take on it, not mine, that they actually studied the Maribou and included some data from the Maribou backwater in the Sam's Creek area, and then entered into the Harpeth because of part of the same water share.
Maribou.
It makes no sense, there's a natural divide, I agree with you. So, when they're looking at underground pool, maybe there's a river under the rock that we don't know about, I don't know, but they're including it, and I'm not in a position to argue with them.
Does the latest county GIS system with the floodplains on it include these numbers?
I don't know the answer to that question. I really don't, Tom, because I just really haven't been involved, it's what Debbie called me, I knew you guys were getting maps.
They've been up there for almost a year.
Well, no. Technically, they send preliminary maps, and until December the 22nd, they're preliminary. Until they are formally adopted, they're preliminary. So, I don't know when the county was told they needed to adopt them, I don't know, I haven't looked at theirs. I just know for your jurisdiction, they don't go live, they're not, you can't enforce that map until the 22nd of December.
But if the map exists, it's part of the GIS system, that's all I'm saying.
I don't know. I don't know. I have no idea.
FEMA has not delivered those layers to the county mapping office.
So, if they haven't been delivered, they can't have been settled, and yours are settled by Austin PGIS. There is a disk in that office, unless, I haven't opened it, but unless I've missed my guess, it's stamped RBIS, it's probably map layers. And it will contain the entire county.
The county might would like to borrow that.
We can burn copies of that. We have to do it on DVD, we can burn copies. They're not right, but it doesn't go live until then.
I think it's on that city box.
Okay, you also have to update your floodplain management ordinance to reflect executive orders 11988 and 13690. Those have to do with wetland areas, EPA is your friend, they're here to help you, and they have to do with, I'm sorry, Tony, I like that decorum I used to have back when I worked directly for government, I'm just blunt now. The other... The other one has to do with infrastructure. And let me say this, how many of you have observed the riprap along the edge of Sam's Creek Road? Do you know what I'm talking about? The riprap is taller than, I don't know, even Kingston Springs, right? It violates the flood ordinance, why? You can't put fill in flood area. You can't put non-compact and non-insure soils in flood area.
Right at the top of the hill?
We could have separated the south end of the county from the river county.
Exactly, which would probably be my next discussion, but you know, we can secede or start over or something. But anyway, all infrastructure, and you guys were here, our new planners, during flood. It was virtually impossible to get from where I live in Pleasantville, Kingston Springs, after flood. There were no roads that were not flooded. So, the county called and said, and the city called, said, we really need some watermarks, can you guys capture some stuff? We did it in a bass boat, it was the only way we could get around. It took us five days to come here. Everywhere we went, the road was flooded. 24 had buildings floating down, so we couldn't come through Briely, because NES's stuff was all over Raleigh Park路. We couldn't go anywhere. So that's why your infrastructure, to the degree that you can, needs to be elevated out of a flood area. You have to update your floodplain management files. How many of you were here during post-flood, when we got everything working? Tony was, Gary was, Lori was, we talked to Brian, Tom was. We were up and running and permitting in four days. It took Nashville 37 days. Why? Because our files were ready. We had everything we needed. So you need to update those files because you've had a new tax assessment since this was done, people have built things, there's a change to the floodplain ordinance, the maps have changed, so you need to go back and look at your files. You need to update your homeowner notification, what do I mean about that? We spent love letters to every property owner that had any flood area on their property, and said, they participate and you participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, before you touch anything, please come and see the floodplain builder, floodplain administrator, and the building official. And that's just in general, before the flood, we did that. Train your staff, because right now, nobody's trained, nobody. And update your GIS platform, which Tom was asking about. And you can't do that without the map layers and without the parcel layer from state. So FEMA sent the maps, they're lovely, they don't have any parcel data on them. So we'll have to acquire the GIS parcel data and the register data from state and settle it on.
Right now, that GIS has all the parcels, all the boundaries, and the floodplains on it. Now, what we're saying is that they are may not be different, but right now, it's there. At least something is there.
Well, what's there is probably when they digitized the maps, Tom, in 2009. It may be the new.
It's only been up for the last year, I don't know when the data was reflected.
Without checking with the county, there's no way I can answer that question, I don't know. In the city?
I believe it's on the city website.
You can't have put them up yet because you just got the disk in the city. You may have gotten preliminary disk.
No, it's going to the website and look at it, I mean, that's.
We will, we'll look at it and see. Alright, your floodplain administrator is your city manager, Debbie Finch, and there's some links on here. Now, I'm sorry, I can't connect to the internet, my computer will talk to your internet, I don't know why. But I did put together a site, I will put a link in all your emails, if you make sure I have your email, Lori will get them to me, and I'll send you that webpage so that you can read the stuff. So that's all the rest of it, you can't take action tonight, because it's not on the agenda other than other. So this is informational, so when I come back in September on the agenda, there needs to be a line item, if I come back, that's at the discretion of the city commission, but there should be an agenda item that says NFIP map changes and presidential executive order changes to the.
We have, we have to do something in planning.
Yes, you are a recommending body.
That's the agenda.
Yes, you're a recommending body for the zoning board to the city commission. So it has to come to you before it goes to the commission. And then there are two readings required to change the ordinance.
I suggest, probably if we can have the document, the disk group will probably okay, but you need to be here with the city commission.
Debbie had asked if I would attend the meeting next Thursday, to kind of walk them through the same process, but we can't officially do anything until it's on, it has to be an agenda. I would love to be able to suspend the rules and move forward, but can't. So, any questions? And Tom, I don't mean to put you off, I just don't know the answer yet, I just walked in the door yesterday.
No, I'm just saying that it's there or whatever.
It must be somebody old, so what she's saying is that we just received the disk with the new map.
For the city, now I don't know when the county got theirs. I don't know when the county got theirs, I don't have any idea, I don't know if anybody does. No? I don't interact with the county, so.
I can't understand why.
I saw it.
I can't understand why.
Gee, me either, Tony, I mean, they were always so kind and sweet. I started to lose my poker face, you know, the one I always wore, but no matter what you say, it looks like this. But I wish I knew the answer to that question, but GIS for you is done through Austin P for updating your viewer. You don't have a lot of GIS.
They will correct the mistakes, either, by the way, because I've looked into their case twice about that.
At a particular point, to move on to another topic, we had a contract in place with Austin P through the planning office that was somewhat stringent, and there were specific requirements that had to be met for the mapping platform. And then I went home and went tired of doing this, and Mr. Fenton changed contract. So now, they pretty much don't have to do a whole lot for the $40,000 a year that you pay them. But that is kind of one of those things. My suggestion to you would be to acquire GIS. Go down to Edwin's office, and I'm looking at you because you interact with the county, while the hazard mitigation plan is being written, they can apply for funding for GIS. And the longer that you are reliant on an external source who also teaches classes, who also has children, who also has other things to do, and allow them to own your data, you're at their mercy. And listen, GIS is one of the few careers, you could take your kid out of high school the day they graduate, ship them to six one-week classes, and they earn $75,000 a year. And the gamers, the ones that just can't rip off that television, those are the ones you want. Because that's what it is, it looks like a big gaming platform. I don't have the tolerance, because I can't sit still that long and watch the lines, it makes me crazy.
I've noticed that.
But, yeah. So, I do them, I just don't like them. It requires me to sit still to do this. But that really is a topic for the county and for the city, you all have separate contracts with Austin P, and you're not being served.
It's not through the deck anymore?
Pardon, it's through who now?
That's what I'm asking, it's not through the deck.
Oh yes, through the J E C D, James just morphed the contract into sort of this odd thing now, where you pay them money and they don't have to do anything.
So, just a timeline question. So if we have this on the September agenda?
Yes, sir.
And then if we make a recommendation then to the city commission?
Yes, sir.
Then that's in September, because the city commission followed, then in October is the first reading?
Right, September will be the first.
I would hazard, well, depends on how you can do your advertising. I don't know that we can advertise something that you haven't formally recommended to go the next week, but I mean, we can, we can put it on as an agenda item, but not as an approval or a recommendation. See, they're required to recommend things that go to the zoning board.
Do we advertise before our first hearing or our second hearing?
We have a public hearing that goes with the second meeting.
And that's the only address for that. So we could hit it, have a planning commission in September.
I will, I will leave that to y'all to figure out, but I would, I would strongly advocate there's a way to shorten this timeline to earlier than November for the commission to have the second reading and a public hearing. It would be fabulous, because the ordinance doesn't take effect for 30 days.
Well, in terms of.
We'd do it in October.
In terms of FEMA, FEMA's deadline is December 22nd.
That's correct.
So what is their time that they have to receive something? Is that when they have to receive it by, or is that when they have to approve it by?
They have to receive it.
By then.
And it can be electronically submitted, and then filed up with a hard copy, which I do all the time.
By December 22nd, yes.
So that's kind of your deadline, your timeline for this project. Any further questions? It's complicated, it's dense, the floodplain manual is 1,441 pages long. Thank you for not allowing residential and commercial construction in flood areas. You're making.
I'm not wrong. I'm explaining the mission properly. One of the things that I've always been particularly proud of is Kingston Springs doesn't allow development in 100 people. And we have pressure to do that. Don't ever let it happen, which is absolutely wrong.
And Tony makes a really relevant point, and I'll tell you why. There are going to be people in your jurisdiction who built according to the rules when they built their property. They may have built in a 1969 map, right? That was an unstudied A-zone, it didn't have base flood elevations, Brian knows the geek I'm speaking. So you're just, look at this general kind of, we know it floods here, so they built and they meant to compliance, and then they got a new map. Now suddenly, there's a base flood, and they're stuck, because they just passed this regulation that in my opinion would last and would not survive a constitutional challenge, because you're retroactively enforcing it. But nobody has felt inclined yet to make that challenge. Because I don't think you can retroactively enforce things, but they are. And they're doing it by saying, but we're not changing the rules, we're just removing the subsidy, which can have a devastating financial impact on your citizens and businesses. So, any questions? I know, I always bring good news when I come, I know you're all so happy to see me. Please send someone from your community to the State Association for Training. It occurs the 25th through the 27th of August, it is in Murfreesboro. I haven't been in the last couple of years, but they provide rudimentary floodplain management training that gives you at least the gear basics. And it's become a really complicated thing, and Tony, I appreciate the compliment earlier, but it's a very dense topic. So it's, there are so many ways to look at it, and so many different interpretations, it's difficult to internalize when you have other duties. So it's not anybody in the city, it's not that nobody's doing it, it's just too much to inhale. Any questions? Concerns, reservations?
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Laura, did you have a comment or question?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So you're going to bring this back for first reading in September to the city commission?
If we can have a recommendation next month.
You're going to have a recommendation by this body in September, and a week later, you're going to have first reading. Who's going to do the legal one?
I assume that the legal work will have to come through here first.
I've got two crackerjack attorneys that I'm taking.
I'll make sure it gets assigned, this is somebody not assuming.
To tackle what Lori's asking, Debbie's asked me to come to the commission meeting, and I'm assuming she's okay to do that. I don't ask questions, I just show up if you guys ask me. But if the commission is so inclined, then I will work with both of them to get this done, and with whoever else that you need to distribute this information to, because you're on a really short leash. But that's something for the city commission to consider. Is that it?
Yeah.
Any others? A correction on there, Debbie's extension is 12.
Debbie what?
12, Debbie's extension is 12.
Phone number.
Her extension is 12. Well, she's the interim city manager, and that extension's 15.
But nobody's going to answer 15.
Yes, she answered it.
She answered it all. She answered money.
I should take it off of there, because I kind of worked out a thing with her, where she was only going to answer because it was meeting, because we were trying to schedule that.
That's how I always call it.
She answers that one for me, I'm like, I can't help it.
She calls out on that one.
Okay, thank you. Alright. I don't see anything else on the agenda, any other discussion before we adjourn? Move we adjourn. Okay? Okay? Alright. Meeting's adjourned, thank you, Sharon.
See, I wanted to be, I wanted to deckboard and deck.